All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for November 12, 2019, at this hour. As always, we'll begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I'd ask that you please rise and join Counselor Bruce Cheney reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll note for the record that the minutes of tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask at this time that she call the rose.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Bowden?
Here.
Counselor Whitman?
Counselor Whitman is absent this evening.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Here.
Counselor Hosmer?
Here.
Mayor Angler?
Present.
Oh, you had to.
All right, let the record show that five of the six counselors are present for tonight's meeting, and that constitutes a quorum, as has been established. Also note for the record that the council is joined at the head table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by our City Finance Director Glenn Smith. Our first order of regular business tonight is acceptance of minutes. Counselors, before you tonight, you have the minutes of October 28, our meeting on October 28. Those were distributed to the council three days later. As of this time, no corrections or changes have been submitted to the clerk for consideration, and so unless there are any changes suggested at this hour, I'm going to declare the minutes to our October 28, 2019, meeting to be accepted as submitted by the city clerk. Consent and action items. We have one item under consent and action tonight, and that is with regard to the acceptance of unanticipated funds made available during the fiscal year per RSA 31:95/B in amounts less than $10,000. And if you will permit me, I will say that this is our first time for doing this, thanks to the voters on November 5th, having confidence in the council and our recommendation that we pass this particular state option law, which gives us the opportunity to forego having a public hearing on these items other than $10,000. So as you can see there tonight, what you have before you is a Moose License Plate Grant that was anticipated in the amount of $3,220. So a motion would be in order to accept the fiscal year 2019, 2020 Moose License Plate Conservation Grant in the amount of $3,220 to be used for the purchase of conserving and protecting the board... I'm sorry? Yes. For use for the purpose of conserving and protecting the Board of Common Council Minutes for the City, Volume III, 1903 to 1912. I think I was mayor in 1912. All right, Counselor Hamel makes the motion, Counselor Haynes, I'm sorry, you're still here.
That's fine, I am.
Seconds of motion. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries. Thank you. Next up is citizen comments for matters night on the agenda. This is the appropriate place on our agenda tonight for anyone who wishes to address the council on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Yes. If you'd identify yourself and where you live, please.
Good evening. My name is David Nims. I live at 36 Ashwood Circle. I addressed the city council two weeks ago concerning a number of items and handed a handout to Cheryl, who she distributed, I believe, to the council members, the mayor and the city manager. Any hands that say that they read it? Scott did. I apologize, I spelled your name wrong, Scott. Did you read it? I read parts of it, parts of it. Okay. Well, at least you read some of it.
You gonna give us a quiz?
No, I'm not, but I was just curious. I was just curious, because I spent a considerable time putting that together in longhand, as you see. Anyway...
That wasn't the normal way we received...
I know, I apologize. I rewrote it three times, and I haven't done a PowerPoint in years, nor have I worn a suit and tie since I retired.
I can tell you worked hard on that.
Excuse me?
I can tell you worked hard on that.
I did. I did. I read every city council meeting this year, and a lot, every piece of information on the Colonial Theater. Anyway, it's nice that most of you have read it. I just want to say, if the people who are watching, I guess it's LRP TV Channel 25 that watch, you should tell all your neighbors to watch it. I never did, and I didn't really attend any council meetings. I would like to comment that you gentlemen and ladies do a great job here. You do a great public service to the city. The 2015 first meeting on the Colonial, Counselor Hamel was here, Counselor Bowden was here, and missing Counselor...
Whitman.
Whitman was here. And Scott was here. I'd just like to reiterate that I'm not against the renovation of the Colonial Theater as long as the city taxpayers do not have an ownership stake in this project, and I know that there are resolutions that are apparently requiring you to do so at this point. I am requesting the project be updated on a weekly basis. I talked to Mr. Whitman after the meeting last week and asked him if, whatever the procedure is to maybe put it as an agenda item early in the meeting, not at item 21, as it has appeared all summer, so that people could stay up and listen to it rather than fall asleep to my boring voice. But I don't know how that's possible, but I'm asking if it can. At the last meeting, Mayor Angler explained the current status of the contract. I don't know if there are any changes. I did take a tour last week of the Colonial Theater. The Tim from BPS took me on a tour, very nice gentleman. There was nobody working in there. He said something about the renovation crew wouldn't be in until, maybe the paperwork was passed? I don't know if that's passed yet. Has it done so?
It has not.
It has not? Okay. I noticed one thing about the theater, and I hadn't been in it in years. It's a very steep slope, but he told me that they're gonna put landings in, so people walk off, they're gonna then go down the steep slope, and I said, "That's gonna be interesting." Okay. I have a handout for you. Last handout. This one you get, because it's only two pages. Could you share with Scott? Oh, wait a minute, that's mine, so...
Just hand them to the clerk and show this through to them.
I'll try not to go over my five minutes. I know that's all, it's allotted. Two things that are here. One was a meeting of January 28, 219, where there was a Colonial Theater project update. The other was a special meeting that was held on February 19, a non-public meeting on the same project. There's a number of things in there that you can read, but two of the main things were, in both meetings, was the funding is complicated in the January 28 meeting. The funding is complicated, and if all 10 funding sources come together at closing, it will happen. But if one funding source does not show up, and the closing doesn't happen, and our $4.2 million doesn't happen. Obviously, we know that the market tax credits didn't come to fruition, and there were changes, apparently, in the resolutions. On the February 11 meeting, the mayor provided to the council copies of three resolutions. The city was not part of the original presentation. The city voted to lend BEDC $1.4 million to purchase the theater from the Baldi family. They made a commitment as much, the city made a commitment as much as $3 million. Down further, the ideal goal is the city would sublet the theater to a production company, and that production company would manage it. In order for this to happen, the mayor seems to think there would be, it would be, need to be a good deal for them on the table. Counselor Cheney questioned what the maintenance costs would be. Mayor Angler stated that heating and electricity would probably run about $50,000 a year. Was that based on factual data or a guesstimate?
Guesstimate.
Okay. City Manager Myers stated at first the city...
By an engineer.
Excuse me?
By an engineer, not by me.
Okay, good. City Manager Myers stated that the first, at first the city would not be looking at additional employees, but probably would need someone trained to operate the sound system and lights. In addition to that, janitorial costs would be added. Now, I don't know what, when I read the 609 brochure, and then there's items that Justin Slattery went over, and then Mayor Angler reiterated, "All of the above items have to be at the closing. If one item is missing, the project does not happen." The key here is, I guess, that one of the items didn't happen, at least one. That's the tax market credit. So the council and the city manager and the mayor decided that at some point, there's some of the, because of the involvement of everyone, and there is a lot of people involved, that we need to go ahead with it and increase the city's funding substantially. And that's what I think is the crux of the problem. And I'm sure I'm missing some elements of it, but again, not knowing exactly how the city council and everything works, but as you explained last week, that you can't take on, the city can't take ownership until five years after the completion.
That's correct.
So apparently, there's a resolution that says that you're going to pay X amount of dollars. Is that a contract with BEDC for that five years?
Yes.
Okay, so there is a contract existing for that. It must be substantial.
It has not been signed yet. None of the contracts have been signed to this date.
They still haven't been signed, okay.
But it has been drafted, yes.
Now, the $1.4 million that was originally paid, BEDC was paying $4,000 a month, apparently, on the interest, correct?
That's correct. It remains doing so today.
Now, the balance, the principal of that bond, does that still remain unpaid?
It's gonna get rolled over into the total amount the city is loaning to the project.
Why so?
Hmm?
Why so? Why wouldn't it have been paid off?
Because the total amount of money that's, that the city has committed to the project is $8.1 million.
Okay.
$1.4 is a rollover the original, and $6.7 is new money.
So we're, round numbers, if I follow, we're a little more than 100% of the original? In the 2015, it was said the city's contribution, I thought it said between $2 and $3 million.
Our original commitment by resolution was for $4.4 million.
Right.
And that is now, that's five years ago, and then now it's $8.1.
Okay.
So it's roughly doubled what it was originally.
My five minutes is probably gonna be up. I'm gonna rest that for now, but I think that we need to discuss the project on a regular basis. Is that possible? I don't really like to come to every council meeting, but I'll come if you'll discuss it.
So I don't, I don't know what you mean by discuss it. I mean, I'm happy...
Well, I don't think, there's been comments that everybody in the public knows the status of this.
You mean discuss the construction progress?
Sure. So that everybody in the public and on the TV will know.
That's fine. I certainly don't have any objection to that. I won't be sitting here anymore, but I certainly don't have an objection to someone else briefing the public as to what the construction is, is, is expected to last a year.
Correct.
And so if the council wants regular updates for the public on where that construction progress stands, I'm all for it.
Yep.
I'll be happy to do that.
And I'd just like to say, I'd like to research, are all the documents that are associated with this available for public viewing, so I could look at purchase orders and so forth, just to see what's...
As far as I know, there could be some documents that are exclusive to Belknap Economic Development Corporation. I'm not aware of any, but there could be. But anything that the city's involved in certainly is a public document.
Would I see Cheryl on that? Would you have the documents in the city files?
I have the minutes.
Okay. But I mean, the documents, like the purchase orders that are...
There aren't that many. There's the original lease agreement, or not, the grease agreement. There's the original loan agreement. That's certainly a public document for the $1.4 million.
I just want, I just want to make sure that everything was done according to contractual and not just a handshake. I mean, just as a matter of course. I'm sure it was done...
And it's all in, it's all in council resolution, and that's all part of the minutes. And I would add that, yes, this thing, this plot has taken many twists and turns over the last five years.
Absolutely.
But they're all well documented. They're all covered by resolutions that were passed legally by the city council.
Okay. I'm not saying that you pulled any, honestly, I'm not, I'm not.
I know, but I'm just saying it's, nothing's been done off the books.
I'm just saying, I don't think that, I don't think that the majority of people in the city, I know the people who are the donors and the people who've pledged money certainly understand it, that it's gonna be a, you know, a cultural arts center and a draw to the city. I'm not sure most of the taxpayers in the city really understand that. So I know they're all, can come to the meeting any week they want, but I'm not sure we could fit $16,000 in this room. Our taxpayers are probably $11,000. But anyway, again, my five minutes. Did anybody have any questions on my supplemental? Was it, I tried to take it from the meeting notes and all of your data that was available to the public as far as people's comments in the paper. I spent two months going through it, and I, as I said before, the only time I came involved with it, and I apologize that I didn't sooner, is when I sat down in front of the Daily Sun thing downtown one morning, reading the paper, and it said, "The tax credits aren't coming through." And I said, "Uh-huh. What's gonna happen now?" And I thought we might take a different course.
Now, what happened in one sentence is, is that that put us in the hole $2.5 million.
Correct.
And, and...
But there was still a chance to allow...
So Counselor Hamel and I came to the city council at that point in time and said, "Look, we basically got two options here. We can fold the whole project."
Yep.
These are the possible consequences of doing that. Or the city can commit to funding that hole of $2.5 million, and the council voted unanimously to do so.
With some, with some people questioning it, but it was, it was...
Yes, very rightfully so. It was a tough decision.
Yeah.
Not an easy one. Easy to argue on both sides.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on a matter not on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir. Name and where you live, please.
Good evening. Joe Haas of Gilmington. I was here to see you a year ago. It's now 7/17 or so, I'll be brief.
Your what?
I was here a year ago on RSA 76:11-A, Roman numeral 3, where you, I suggested that you perhaps put an information statement into the tax bills that were going out that fall, and it's been a year since then. And since then, I've learned that the Board of Tax and Land Appeals does take appeals from municipalities on the tax rates that they set, and what I'm looking at is mostly the school tax rate, but they only do it on the town tax rate in paragraph 1 of RSA 71-B: 5. So the bottom line is, you got, I just emailed the finance director this afternoon, after he had already left, I had talked earlier, I had...
So you have some information you want to leave us?
Well, it's an email that I've already sent that I'd like for him to share with you, if you could.
He can share that with us, yes.
Okay, but the bottom line is that you all got the tax rate either last Thursday or Friday. I don't know what day it was.
Yeah.
But there's an RSA 21-J:35-Roman-6, 31, I mean, 21-J-35-6, where it says, "Within 10 days of receiving that, you have the right to protest to the DRA, Department of Revenue Administration." And what I'm saying is, Andrew Valinsky and John Tobin, who are two attorneys who have gone around the state informing SAUs about what's going on right now, he says what you're doing is unlawful by taxing the people by so many dollars per thousand on their property value. It's supposed to be done by the state. In the Conval case, which is now sitting at the New Hampshire Supreme Court from Keene by Michael Tierney, the attorney in Manchester, he won on two points, he lost on two points, but the 98-page opinion from the judge in Keene, he said, "The bottom line isn't supposed to be state-funded."
Okay, I'll interrupt you, sir. This is very technical and not really suitable for this particular time and audience. You're talking way over our heads, frankly.
Well, well...
So what I'd like to do is have the city finance director, he can circulate that memorandum to us and the city manager, and we can read that, and...
And hopefully, before you warrant over to the tax collector to bill and collect.
All right.
It would be nice, a stronger case down at the DRA if you do not, but if you do, you still have that 10 days to contest. And I'm just saying that the taxpayers of the town...
Are you aware of any cities or towns in the state of New Hampshire that have protested?
Yes. The three women, selectmen, and Oscepe even went one step beyond. They wrote a letter to the DRA saying, "Do not even tax us other than $0 per thousand. If you do, we're not gonna process it," by RSA 76:5.
Okay, interesting, thank you.
Because the law overrides the statute.
All right. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, thank you too.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Neil Pankhurst, from Meredith and also a property owner here in Laconia. I'm glad we're talking about the Colonial Theater, because I'm the artistic director, producing artistic director now, of the Winnipeg Playhouse that was formerly in the Weers Beach, and more recently has been in Meredith. So while as a not-for-profit organization leader, who is not a U.S. citizen, I get no vote, I think I get a voice. So I sent everybody here, well, the counselors and the mayor, a letter back in October, and I thought it would probably be useful to put that into the record. I don't think me sending you a letter gets into the record, so I'm gonna sort of essentially read the letter.
Does this have to do with the Airbnb subject, correct?
It is, sorry, yes. Well, no, not Airbnb.
Well, short-term rental.
Short-term rental. Unfortunately, that's one of my points about the fact that this has been pushed over to Airbnb rather than it being short-term rental.
Okay.
So the purpose of this communication is in regard to my concern about the proposal to restrict the use of property in Laconia for short-term rental, particularly with the more restrictive suggestion brought up at the second September council meeting, as reported in the Laconia Daily Sun on September 24. And this is the change in the policy regarding properties being, having the host be, having that be their primary residence. These restrictions are going to put a huge financial burden on, in the worst-case scenario, close the theater that I run. The council and the mayor spent some considerable time at the last meeting that I was here for apologizing to its citizens and business owners regarding the decisions they were making about the roadworks, and I'm trying to avoid having that same sort of thing happen, and the apologies to other businesses, myself included, about some of the decisions you may be making down the future. I would just say, I know this is not on the agenda tonight. I would have been here next week, but I'm not in the country next, not next week, but the two weeks' time. I'm not in the country in two weeks' time, so I'm here tonight. I would like to lay out my concerns in the following way. First, how the apparent need for change came about. Second, some possible misunderstandings of how companies like Airbnb function in comparison to longer-term rentals. And thirdly, the playhouse's story and how these restrictions could impact an important local creative and economic institution that funnels probably about $800,000 into the local economy. While I have not attended council meetings or the zoning meetings where individuals first pleaded a case for continuance of the business practices, it has appeared to me, through the reporting I've read, that the issue was first brought up to the council's attention through complaints by neighbors of several individuals who were running short-term rentals either next door or close by in their street. Subsequent to this, it would seem completely unrelated, is the further concern that short-term rental properties are detrimental to the residential neighbors in which they are found. And also let us not forget, and again, Airbnb was mentioned, that this focus seems to have been on the online rent, short-term rentals, but it actually will affect all short-term rentals in the Lakes region, which is actually some people's businesses, where they, there is business companies around here that actually that is part of their businesses, short-term rentals, and that will affect those businesses. While the initial attention was drawn to this issue through neighbors complaining of certain rental guests' behavior in individual properties, this sort of behavior is actually extremely rare, primarily due to the protocols put into place by the operating platforms. While what I'm about to say may be known to you, I have not seen any reporting that would suggest these facts have been explained explicitly. First, each guest that books through platforms like Airbnb are asked to write a review of the property they have stayed at. Conversely, the host also writes a review of the guest. These reviews are available for all future hosts to see and can block a person's request to stay at their property if the reviews are poor. Further, no host has, who has had a bad experience with a guest is going to allow that guest back into their property. Second, because a property has to be appealing to the guests they are staying, that are staying there, in general, these rental properties are going to be well-maintained and well-presented and are therefore going to have a positive impact visually on the neighborhood in which they are situated. Third, while it is obviously unfortunate that there have been one or two poorly behaved guests that initiated this, initiated this whole debate, the fact is that because they were short-term rentals, the impact on the neighbors were indeed short-lived. If property owners go from short-term to long-term rental agreements and are similarly inflicted with undesirable renters, the impact on the neighbors and neighborhood would be much more devastating. Long-term rental does not necessarily determine better community. Lastly, there has been much said in various forums about Laconia's need for good, cheap family housing stock, and yet, the family property that we purchased had sat on the market for over six months before, six months before we saw it, having reduced four times, and yet, in all that time, had no offer put on it. Three, and so the playhouse's position and the jeopardy this proposal, especially the newer, more extreme position that's been taken by some council members at the most recent council meeting, puts us in. As you'll probably know, the summer represents the theater's busiest and most vital time of year financially. As the playhouses expanded partly due to its move to the new venue and partly as circumstance meant we had to take on larger productions, our need for housing increased dramatically. It now takes about 70 employees over the course of the summer to produce the shows we perform. We had been lucky that a couple of partners helped us with housing for several years. The Community College, New Residence, and the Taylor Community provided us with several apartments and properties that along with the occasional use of an individual home sufficed for several years. However, from 2015 to 2017, the Taylor Community's housing stock went from 32 available units down to zero. And so for the summer of 2018, it was clear the theater needed another option to house the staff. However, as we know, lodging or housing in the Lakes region in the summer is very expensive as a Lakes region is a tourist destination. Just look around us. This area no longer manufactures shoes, or textiles, or hosiery, or streetcars that were manufactured just in these mill buildings 100 years ago. Anyway, the playhouse, having exhausted all leads with no success, my wife and I realized the only viable option was to buy a property that the theater could use in the summer free of charge. To offset the extensive costs incurred in property ownership in taxes, utilities, and maintenance, all of which are much more personally expensive, by the way, when the property is not your primary residence, we decided to rent out the property in the non-summer season. Long-term rental was not out, long-term rental was out of the question, as the theater needed the property for a large part of each summer, so short-term rental was the only option. If this zoning proposal was to be adopted, and if the more restrictive notion of only allowing short-term rentals for a property that is someone's primary residence was additionally adopted, then we could not afford to continue to own the property and would have to sell. This would mean that the playhouse would not be able to house enough actors, and would be faced with having to drastically change its summer programming, programming that is already set for the year 2020, be faced with massive housing bills which we cannot afford, or potentially, in the worst-case scenario, close down. I'll leave you with this. When back in 2003, I was enticed by the city, the Laconia city manager, to form the playhouse here in the Lakes region rather than another town in New England, it was in part because she claimed Laconia was a thriving, forward-thinking, and expanding tourist destination. If this were ever true, if, sorry, if this were ever true, then it would seem at odds with a notion of restricting this new format and delivery of the tourist experience. Thank you. I do have a copy of this for you, if you would like.
Mayor, would you be open to a question?
I...
I apologize for not responding to you personally when you sent in the letter I meant to, and just got distracted over the past few weeks, and have not done so. And again, I apologize for that.
I know exactly how it goes like that.
But the, the question I have for you, and you don't have to answer this, but, so the playhouse owns a home building in Laconia, correct?
Technically, I own the...
You own it.
I own it.
You own it.
For the theater.
Will you tell us where it's located?
Yes, it's, it's in Bowman Street, 55 Bowman Street.
Okay.
So it's right behind the courthouse.
All right. So what I can tell you is, and this is the missing piece of the puzzle that you're not caught up on, apparently, and what I was going to tell you is that it is currently illegal for you to be doing what you're doing.
Correct, and I was aware of that. Mr. Bowden, Counselor Bowden, had informed me that what, that what the council was actually trying to achieve was to make it actually legal for people to do that.
Yes, right now, it is illegal.
Correct.
So what you're doing right now, today, or we're doing this summer, or if there's somebody in that house right now on a short-term basis, it's not being done legally.
Correct, as are all of the other people who are doing what they're doing, either on Airbnb or through rental companies like Bayside Rentals, for example.
So I just wanted to make sure you understood.
No, I do understand that. The, the, really, I actually have...
There are plenty of towns in the Lakes region where I'm sure it is legal, but right now, right here, it's not legal.
I have no problem with, we're, there's also conversation about this in Meredith. But one of the things that is the problem for us, as an organizer, or myself personally for the organization, is the fact that we're making, it's that restriction about having it being someone's permanent or primary residence, which is not what came from the planning board. The planning board, when they sent you up the proposal, all of those, those pieces that they put into place to make it fair and legal, and having to make sure that the houses themselves were in good order, no problem with that. It's really to do primarily now with the fact that it has to be someone's primary residence. And I understand that if someone's out there in California and they own a property here, that they, you know, they may not be the best landlord, but I think that we could, we think about how responsible people are, and it may well be to do with taking the people's ability to rent away if they fall short of those responsibilities, rather than making it a legal requirement that people have to be in their houses.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council tonight on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we don't have any nominations or elections tonight. We have no public hearings, we have no presentations, so I think the next thing up, if I got this correct, is the mayor's report, and I quickly, simply wanted to acknowledge that we had a, we had our, our city election on November 5th, and I want to congratulate a number of people upon the results of that election, starting with our Ward Six councillor, Andrew Hosmer, who as of today has a new title, and that is Mayor-elect of the City of Laconia.
Thank you.
And, and Andrew will be, will be inaugurated and moving into this chair that I've occupied for the last six years at, in the middle of January, and he will become the mayor at that point in time. So we congratulate him, and also congratulate all of the other councillors. So, the only new face on the council, councillor Hosmer will be moving over here as the new mayor, to this seat, and his seat will be occupied by Tony Felch, who will be the only new member joining the council in January as the Ward Six councillor. All of the other councillors were re-elected in the election, and my congratulations to them. In particular, I would congratulate councillor Haynes, because he actually had a real live opponent, which the rest of you did not, and, and so congratulations to all of you on the voters approving. And I would also like to extend all of our thanks, I think, to, obviously, if there's gonna be a contested election, not everybody can win, and Peter Spanos and Sarah Jenna and Brenda Bear stepped forward to put their name on the ballot at this election, and I think we owe them all a debt of gratitude for doing so. It's not easy to put your name out in the public and let people take shots at it and say yes or no to your candidacy, that's a, that's a tough thing to do, and I think everyone at this table recognizes that. And so we thank them for stepping forward and offering their service to the city, and we wish them all the best. And the last thing I'd like to mention is the, on the police commission front, the retirement of Tom Tar, chairman of the Police Commission, who chose not to run for reelection this year. And so we thank Tom for his many years of service on the Police Commission on behalf of the city, and we welcome to that spot, as a result of this election, Scott Davis, who is the new, a lot of you remember Scott Davis from his years of service as the director of the Hewitt Centre over at Laconia High School, and he also served for a number of years on the Airport Authority Board, where I got to know him better. So congratulations to Scott, and thank you to Tom Tar as well. Committee reports, any committee business tonight to discuss? How about liaison reports? Anybody have a liaison report tonight? No?
I guess I'll, I'll bring you up to date with respect to the historic overlay district. That was taken up by the planning board at our recent meeting, and was sent on to the council. I think it was a 42 vote. So the council will be getting that piece of legislation for its review. I don't know when that'll happen, I'll trust the city manager to schedule it appropriately.
So, ask the manager, do you acknowledge that we're, it's now back in our hands again?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other liaison reports tonight? Okay, citizens request to comment on current agenda items. Now we're to tonight's agenda, and any of you in the audience tonight who wish to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda are welcome to address the council. This is Shore.
Tara Shore, Adams Street. I'm here on behalf of an idea that I know was sent to Scott Everett in regards to the Lakeport parking, and I wanted to make sure that the council heard the idea. It's not mine, it's Jared Gilmetz, he's given me the okay to share it tonight, because he couldn't be here. So I'm gonna read...
And how, how, was this idea submitted to the council or the city?
It wasn't submitted to the council, it was submitted, it was given to Scott Everett, it was sent to Scott Everett as a thought.
Okay.
So...
So you're on his behalf, making it public tonight?
I'm making it be on Jared's behalf, because it's Jared's thought, and he couldn't be here tonight, and I, and when he shared it with me, I thought it would be important to at least share it with all of you, and if, just to have it in your brains, if you're gonna be speaking to us.
Okay, for the record, I'll note, for those of you who don't know, Jared is a local architect.
Yes. And so this is, this is the letter that he sent to Mr. Everett. "I wanted to share an idea with you that I had after reading an article in today's Sun on the redevelopment beginning in Lakeport and the current lack of parking opportunities. While reading through the article and the discussion points, a design possibility occurred to me that I think could be an innovative solution that would create the required parking while maintaining the neighbourhood park. Designing and constructing a multi-level structure that supports parking at the lowest level and develops a park on the top level. This structure could utilise a portion of the existing Sanborn Park to create this urban solution. Whether the parking is at existing grade or recessed into the ground, the roof of this parking structure would become vegetated and can function as either a sports field or playground, depending on which side of the park was utilized. This unique construction would allow the creation of much-needed parking and also create an aesthetically and functionally pleasing structure that still connects with the neighbourhood fabric. The initial example that came to mind was the BU New Balance, Boston University, New Balance Athletic Field and Parking Garage, which has ground-level parking with rooftop sports field. A truly innovative solution to the urban dilemma of parking and space utilization, several alternative examples of a below-grade parking lot with ground-level field park are the Harvard Medical School and Post Office Square in Boston, and the Jay Pritzker Pavilion in Chicago." And he goes on to say how exciting it is for the rejuvenation of Lakeport and so forth. So, I, I think a lot of you probably know Jared, but, and his ideas, the innovation of such an idea is, I thought was wonderful, and I certainly thought that it was important, since your discussion tonight is about that parking, that you have some knowledge that thinking outside the box would be amazing for us here in the city. I certainly think that what Mr. Everett is planning on doing and doing in Lakeport is important, but at the same time, losing green space would be a hard thing to do in that area. There's very little of it, and to be able to save it, I think, would be important. So, I'm gonna give this to Cheryl. This is, there is a, just a online photo of the Boston University field that he speaks to, and there is some information in there about where to see more information about the BU Sports Field as well. So, I'll give that to Cheryl to share with all of you, and I'll encourage you all to think maybe outside the box when you have those discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council tonight on a matter that is on tonight's agenda?
I just have a request.
Sorry?
From Tara. Can you make that, that proposal or that letter available to everybody via email? Can you make Jared's letter?
Send it to us.
Okay. All right, I saw a hand up over here. Yes, sir.
Good evening, friends and neighbours, my name is George Galatano, this is my wife Karen, we live on Willow Street. We're here to talk about the park, Sanborn Park, and we thought it would be fitting to start off with, ask everybody maybe to join us in a moment of silence for Private John Sanborn, who was killed in action in Korea, September 5th, 1950, and for whom the park was in question, was dedicated, so, please. According to a November 19th, 2006 article in the Laconia Daily Sun, Private Sanborn grew up on Mechanic Street, in the same house where his mom was notified of his death. He was killed in heavy fighting three weeks after arriving in Korea. The park was originally dedicated to Private Sanborn in 1973, and it was rededicated in 2006, both times apparently to great fanfare. The Laconia Daily Sun reported that Private Sanborn's family, as well as members of the Laconia American Legion, along with the Lakeport community, joined veterans in the City of Laconia in honoring Private Sanborn, as well as the many other New Hampshire servicemembers who gave their lives for this country when the park was dedicated. It is clear that the sacrifice made by Private Sanborn and his family moved this community deeply. People saw the cost, the cost borne by Private Sanborn and his family, and they dedicated this park to him. And as I reflected on this evening's meet, this evening's meeting, it struck me that Private Sanborn probably spent a lot of time as a kid playing in the very area we are contemplating paving over. It is easy to see the high regard the community once had for Private Sanborn. Karen and I see it three times a day when we walk our dog around the park. We see the beautiful sign, the beautiful stone bearing his name. And we wonder, did the high regard once held for Private Sanborn diminish with the passage of time? Are we really thinking about paving Private Sanborn's park in this community packed with veterans? No, I, I, I don't think we're really thinking about that. I think it would be a shame if anything like that was to happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. I saw a hand up on the side too, here somewhere. Was it Dave?
Yep. Thinking outside the box, I just thought of what Tara was saying. Maybe Scott Everett would be like to bring his theatre downtown and become part of the Colonial Theatre, and we could throw in the parking garage as an incentive, and he could put a garden on the roof, since we didn't need that much parking spaces, so. I don't know Scott Everett, and I don't know what kind of theatre he's gonna do, but...
Ma'am, maybe as a parting comment, you could invite him down. Thank you.
I will mention it to him. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Lisa Moore in 42 Valley Street, Lakeport. I'm wondering where the development of Sanborn Park fits into the master plan of the village concept for Lakeport. I'm wondering if long-term, the idea is to sacrifice that southeastern part of Lakeport and just consider the residential, the Elm Street corridor? I, I don't know, but I certainly feel that paving over the one open area of that part of Lakeport where there are many multifamily dwellings is not well-considered, and is in some forms of maybe an economic injustice to these people, to take away maybe their only open space for that, that area. I don't live on that particular end of the street abutting the park, but I pass by it every single day. I'm also kind of wondering if, if you've considered paving the existing parking lot that you have there, that people are to be utilizing to park to access the playground area. There also, in my mind, it would be much more aesthetically pleasing and benefit the downtown, benefit that area, if there are places where you could do these, maybe two or three space parking lots, instead of making one large parking lot which would end up becoming a heat sink. That, the, putting asphalt down is gonna raise the temperature of that little area a great deal, plus you have stormwater issues, and so the environmental aspects of it, I know that most of you are aware of, but I just, I just really feel that you don't need to be taking away the only green space that many of those homes have down there. And you talked about wanting this continued, having a village feel of the three areas, Weir's Beach, downtown Laconia and Lakeport, and if you start turning it into a parking lot, it's not gonna have a village feel. So, as I said, I'm just wondering what the long-term vision is for Lakeport from all of you, and if you're going to abandon the residential section that is in that, behind Fattalows and the Vineyard Church and all that area, if you're just abandoning it as residential and figuring you're just gonna focus on Elm Street? Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm glad I came when I came, because I looked at the agenda, I thought maybe 9:30 might be the near the time we'd be doing this. So I have two, two comments. My first is that...
Did you identify yourself first?
Yes, Steve Fay, Lakeport.
Okay, thank you.
I think before we consent to the application, we need to look to see what other alternatives there are. Because there may be an alternative, and Lisa sort of alluded to this, even though I've not talked to her, that maybe an alternative allows the park to exist and other, other uses to take place. So that's my first comment, I just think that it's the right thing to do, to make the developer would like to do this, take a hard look, show us the numbers, and see what the choices might be before we start the paperwork, and all that comes with that, of considering the park as, as a site. The second thing I'd like to comment on is that, let's say it unfolds that the park is the right site, then I think, once again, before we consent to that application, we should look to find, as you said in the Laconia Links, what are the alternatives to compensate for this, which are of similar size or greater, and similar value or greater, so we know there's actually something that can be traded for. So those are, those are my two comments.
Okay, thank you. Did I see a hand way in the back?
Hello, good evening. My name is Elise Hubbard. I grew up in Laconia. I was born and raised here. My father, Dr. Joe Gage, spent a great deal of time building the community, helping the schools, helping the police, helping the community, helping even the council, to help build Laconia to be a better place. We lived through the urban renewal, which we made many mistakes because we rushed. We took away green spaces, we took away things and put parking garages, that didn't work. I'm asking you to take time to step back, to look at the alternatives. I live right above what you're trying to make a parking space. I drive by that park every day. People say I don't see people play there. Well, let me tell you, since someone told me that, Mr. Bounds, I have seen several kids playing there, I have seen several people playing ball, people walking, I have seen people walking with the dogs, and I will tell you this, if that is the litmus for taking that away, I will make sure that people use that park. So, but, I will say, citywide, people are not using the parks like they used to, because we don't have the young children out there playing ball and doing other things. We have a community that we're trying to rebuild, we're trying to make it friendly for the children to go play. You take that green space away, where is that community where those children, that they can only walk there? Where are they gonna play? There isn't place. I like the sound of making an alternative, but what you're doing is you're taking traffic, and you're pulling it back now, two blocks, to a residential community and bringing traffic. So now, not only you taking the park away, but you're making it more dangerous for the kids who are walking in that area and crossing the road. I was just wondering, what alternatives have you looked at? I was just wondering, what alternatives have you looked at? What are you looking at? What other things have you looked at as an alternative to just taking the park, the easy route? And I also know that it was for the...
May I respectfully...
Please.
This is one thing I want to make clear to all of you, is you ask, what have we done? And the answer is, nothing.
Okay.
And the reason we have done nothing is because there's been no official proposal of any kind submitted to the council until now.
I want to make sure that it's not a rush to judgment. Because what...
And that's fine.
The feeling that I was getting is that this was going this way.
And we're advised to do that, but what I'm saying is, you're making it sound, and others too, that we are rushing to make a judgment on this tonight, and that certainly is not true.
Okay.
We haven't begun to look at this.
If I may just say that the community as a whole has heard that this is being done. They haven't heard any alternative, so if I get the feeling that this is happening, it's because we haven't heard anything else.
Heard anything about what?
I think, if I may, I think I've been pretty clear, or tried to be pretty clear in discussions that I've had, that this is not... We're not rushing into this. We're approaching it as carefully as we can. We're looking at all options with respect to this matter. This is just a beginning point for a discussion. What happens with Sanborn Park is a long way off and a lot of hard work ahead of us. You know, we just got a proposal tonight from Jared Gilmet, which might or might not work, but I don't think anybody should be thinking that this is the beginning of the end of Sanborn Park, because it's not.
So you do have alternatives that you've been looking at?
No.
We're exploring everything.
We're not looking at anything.
But this is on the agenda tonight, is it not?
Yes, but that doesn't mean we're taking action on it tonight. It's on the agenda tonight because a developer came forward with an official proposal.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean we're going to act on it. That doesn't mean how we're going to approach it. We haven't even discussed that yet, let alone looked at possible alternatives.
I didn't accuse you of...
But you're asking us if we looked at other alternatives, and the answer is no. We haven't, because it's not been a subject...
Okay, Mr. Angler, I'm here to vote, I mean, I'm here just to let you know that I'm speaking for myself and for many people that I've spoke to who live in that community, and I realize that there are some who do, who feel differently, but the majority that I have spoken to really feel that it would be a detriment to that area.
I just want to be clear... I'm sorry, say the last part again?
It would be a detriment to that area.
I understand that, and I think we all understand that.
To people who live in that area.
Yes.
Who pay taxes in that area.
So one party has come forward and asked us to consider this, which until tonight, we have not in any way, shape, or form officially done at the council level or even at the staff level.
Okay.
It's just, you know, I know there's been discussion about it in the press, and it's gotten some press and whatnot, but that's not the same as the city taking a serious look at it. As of right this moment, we haven't taken a serious look at anything, let alone made a decision.
Okay. All right, I'm glad to hear that. It makes me feel good to know that maybe we can look at alternatives and put it out there.
It's not like we're 90% down the road to paving Sanborn Park or something like that. That couldn't be further from the truth.
You sound like you're a little bit at me, Mr. Angler, and I would like you to know that I've lived in Laconia my whole life, and I've seen things move very fast. So I came here tonight just to make sure my voice was heard. I don't want to be attacked by you.
And we all appreciate you coming forward.
I was being passionate about something, but I wasn't accusing you of anything. I wanted you to know that there are a lot of people who are passionate about this. I appreciate all of you and your time and all that you've done, and I'm not trying to say that you've done something below board. I'm not trying to accuse you of anything. I was just here to speak loudly on something that was on the agenda tonight. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your participation.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with one item that was not included in your financial and operational trends report, and that is, as alluded to a little bit earlier, the East City did work with the Department of Revenue Administration and set the tax rate last week, so we'll be targeting bills to be going out in the mail toward the end of this week, and with a due date in mid-December. And for the record, because there was an increase of assessment citywide in the area of $80 million, the tax rate dropped from what it is currently at $20.85 per thousand, and then further to what we had projected with the adoption of the budget at $21.29 per thousand. The new tax rate is set at $20.59 per thousand. So again, tax bills will be hitting the mail later this week. So the financial and operational trends report that is in your packet, we'll start at the top of the first page. You can see that our current year assessment is basically tracking closely with where we were last year at this time, so it's at 12 million. You can see the fire and police calls on page two, I'm sorry, on page one and page two. Motor vehicle registration at the bottom of page two continues to be coming in at a healthy pace. You can see that we're about $60,000, $65,000 ahead of total motor vehicle registration from this particular point to the same period last year. The overtime report is there. We are working with the police department as requested to expand upon some of the breakout, breakdown of the police overtime, and we're going through that process as we speak. No real changes to the trust fund balances on the bottom of page four, a little bit of impact fee revenue coming in as well. I'm going to highlight one thing. We've had conversations with the school to utilize some of their impact fees in the next budget cycle. When we collect impact fees from new development, it was on items that were not grandfathered when the impact fees were adopted back around 2009, 2010. So it was for projects that were newly approved after that. There is a window of opportunity where the funds need to be utilized. We are still well within that range, but I believe all of the other departments listed there, police, fire, parks, roads, and library, have drawn down some of the impact fees over the past years, with the school being the exception. So we just want to make sure that we work within the parameters of the state law and utilize those funds appropriately, so we are coordinating that with the schools. The last page of the report carries through on the EMS billing and the revenue, and again, we had mentioned the last meeting, that we were going to, if there was no objection, to drop off the fiscal year '18, '19 numbers. There was a request to keep it on one more month, so I'm looking at the bottom chart that that's been completed. The total revenue collected now did increase by $11,000 from where we were last month at this time. I can tell you that I believe every month, except for July and August, and meaning a year ago, July and August, showed at least some additional revenue coming in. So I believe it was 10 out of the 12 months showed additional revenue coming in. Additionally, we've collected about $4,700. That's not reflected here. That's through the collection agency on delinquent accounts, and as I've mentioned in the past, we have the revenue that we've collected from outside departments who have come in and utilized the paramedic or the EMS refresher training courses. That's not included in this column, so we're well over $950,000 when you include those other areas in. So we will continue internally just to track and monitor, so we get a better sense of the numbers, but that's where we are. I'd be happy to take any questions anyone may have.
Questions or comments for the city manager? Do you have more to get to?
No, one more sec.
None? We're on to new business. First item of new business is a temporary traffic order for the holiday parade scheduled for December 1st, and I'm assuming that because it's on this part of the agenda, that there's something new here.
There is. We do have representatives from Celebrate Laconia who can speak to it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Beth Sansucy. I'm 53 Harvard Street.
William Pocat, 185 Provin Street.
So we're actually here on behalf of our temporary traffic order. There have been some slight modifications, of which I can reply to Cheryl, though you may have already received those changes. The fifth is no parking vehicular traffic shall be permitted on Beacon Street East, beginning Main Street to Hanover Street. We've modified the start time from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. And then number eight, which is the addition of two back in parking spaces on Beacon Street East in front of the Bellknap Mill, to be used for the placement of an eight-by-eight MyBox. This will serve as our toy box donation drive, and that will be also working with DPW for reflectorized barrels at the street-side corners.
So generally speaking, what has changed in the route this year, and with approval from the Parks Commission, is that the parade route is actually going to go into reverse this year, starting at Opechii Park and coming down Main Street and ending with a celebration in Stewart Park, and then in Rotary Park, and using the evergreen that's there as a living Christmas tree. We've had challenges in trying to cut and mount and maintain a tree in Veteran Square. So the parade route will still run down Main Street and through the downtown. It's just going to be in reverse direction. In addition, Beth, can you speak to some of the activities that are going to be happening that afternoon?
Certainly. We're also hosting a Light Up Laconia Holiday Festival, which will take place at Rotary Park from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. So we'll have demonstrations. We will have, Celebrate will have headquarters, like I mentioned, the toy box donation drive. We have some activities. Parks and Rec will be involved as well. The Lakes Region Sled Dogs will be there, face painting, a lot of family-friendly activities. And then we'll also have some music there, too. And that will also coincide with what's happening at the Bellknap Mill, their Yuletide traditions from 12 to 3.
And food vendors?
Yes, sorry, the most important part, food trucks. So we'll have between five to seven food trucks there as well. Those will be lined up against the side where Fit focuses, which will be open to festival goers.
Okay. Any questions?
So Beacon East is shut down in order to stage that festival area, and then Main Street will just be shut down basically for the time of the parade route like it is. Beacon East will be shut down earlier in the day, up to Hanover Street, so cars who need to get over to this parking lot or the post office, or just go up Main Street, come down Hanover Street and access it, but it'll be closed earlier so they can stage some of these trucks and various things that are going on.
What time does the parade start?
The parade is at 4:30.
Okay. Thank you.
And that is on the Sunday after of Thanksgiving weekend.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for coming tonight, and in a general sense, on behalf of the council, I'd like to thank not just the two of you, but I know you're just the tip of the iceberg in terms of the people who volunteered to help with Celebrate Laconia and put these things on for the city, so we're all deeply appreciative.
Yeah, thank you so much, and we hope that you're all able to attend, and that you'll also be in the parade as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, a motion being ordered to approve temporary traffic order number 17 for the holiday parade on December 1, 2019, beginning at 2:00 p.m. and expiring at 7:00 p.m., and request to waive all fees associated with this event as presented. Council Hosmer makes that motion, seconded by Council Bounds. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries unanimously. And we are on to the ever-popular sewer warrant. So we have before us tonight the 2019 Second Half Sewer Warrant, which is posted on page 25, and needs the signature of not the mayor, but all six members of the city council. Your autograph on that. So a motion being ordered to approve the 2019 Second Half Sewer Warrant. Council Hosmer enthusiastically makes that motion, and Council Bounds even more enthusiastically seconds it. Any discussion about the sewer warrant? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative. Non-controversially, the sewer warrant is approved. Okay, that's it for new business. Unfinished business. Authorization to move forward with the purchase of a new ambulance. See, the chief is with us again tonight.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. I know at the end of the last meeting, I had a couple of things I was asked to take a look at. One of it was in relation to Council Littman had asked about financing. He had a couple of specific questions. One of them was money down. I did contact the purchasing agency that we would be going through. They directed me to the company themselves that would be building it. They don't require money down, and they do have a third... The other question was related to financing. They do have a third-party finance company that we could go through. They gave me some rates. I brought them back and talked to Jonathan about them, and he said, yeah, that's not the direction you're going to want to go. So that would be, you know, we would look forward to that, you know, after the approval, and I've worked through the finance office here about taking care of any financing. The second question that came up during that was relative to the gas versus diesel, and I had to do research on this, on the differences myself, and kind of looked at some stuff. I did it by going, I spoke with Danny Walker at the city garage. Relative to the amount of time we're going to want to keep this vehicle, and to the type of usage that we're going to have, he leaned on wanting us to go with diesel. The only addition he threw in was wanting to make sure that we try to get an extended warranty, so I factored that money in as well. He then sent me over to Ford dealership to have me talk to their fleet maintenance about the same questions, have that same conversation, again, related to the type of work that our ambulance would be doing, and the amount of years we're looking to keep it. They too recommended diesel. So that's what I'd like to be moving forward with.
Why diesel instead of gasoline?
So, they talked about, because this type of vehicle, years that we're trying to keep it, 15 years, they said that it will last longer. Idles better. This vehicle idles a lot. It idles better, has better torque. We're putting a lot of weight on it, and I'm not going to get into the weeds on the mechanic stuff, because I'm going to sound really stupid quickly, but, you know, the amount of weight that we're actually going to be putting on this chassis, it has better workhorse. It works better for this type of a application.
Okay. Chief, is the extended warranty, how many years does that go?
So, it is, it's an eight-year warranty. It's, they're all, they have a couple of different years. The engine hours are all the same, no matter how many years you go with. So what I ended up doing is going with the higher years, even if we come close to or go over the miles or hours, but I went with more of a medium-range plan, so to kind of offset the cost that way, and I think it'll help us for as long as we possibly can have it.
Where it's an ambulance, what does, do you have any idea what the warranty covers? I mean, like on a normal automobile, it doesn't cover brakes and all that?
Yeah, there is a plan that covers some more stuff. This is the one I went with, like I said, it was a mid-range one. It's more powertrain, it's more sort of that, the crux of the vehicle itself, more than anything. And the only reason we went with that, I did talk to different people about this one, the same people, because we have an internal maintenance plan already in place to continue to work on this stuff. It was smarter for us to go in this route than it was if we were somebody that was just, you know, I have nobody to work on this anyhow, and I'm stuck, so that was the direction I went in for that reason.
So routine maintenance is covered in your own garage?
Yes.
So you wouldn't have a maintenance contract?
Yeah, there's a few, and I mean, I do have it, if you'd like. There was a few routine maintenance things that they could turn to, but the majority of routine will be in-house, and then anything extraneous would be through the warranty package.
And so on the extended warranty, it's eight years and/or a certain number of hours?
Correct.
Okay, what's the...
It's only 8,000 hours, which isn't high. It's 8,000 hours no matter which plan you get. And so, our hours hit that. I'm hoping that this ambulance doesn't hit those hours as quickly as like our current ambulance do does, because it's going to be rotated. If we stay on our five-year plan like we've been talking about, it'll get rotated to a secondary ambulance quicker, so maybe we'll keep those hours down. That's my hope. So the difference in, you know, whether it be seven years or eight years, it's, I know it's all money, but it's a small amount of money between that range, so I said, well, we're not looking at the highest-range one. Let's go with the most amount of time and try to get the biggest bang that we can for our money.
And in regards to the financing, what's the, how long will it take from the time you put the order in until it's delivered? Until you have to pay for it?
Eight to 10 months. I'm hoping closer to the eight-month range.
So, chief, one thing I know we discussed at the last meeting that I don't see the answers to here are... the, what the requirements from the manufacturer are in terms of a deposit, non-refundable, or to get in line for the?
There's, they requested no money down.
No money down?
Nope. I asked that question to them directly.
So the whole amount would be due at?
However we decide to do it. If we bond it and try to pay all that, if we go into, if we enter into a financing plan with them, which they have that option, or we can do our own financing plan that I would defer to how the finance department wants to do
it. So we can place an order today theoretically and wouldn't have to give them any money?
Correct.
And wouldn't have to give them any money until the ambulance was actually ready for delivery?
Correct. The only money they would ask for, and we don't have to pay it, they're paying for it, is there is a fee to use that finance, I mean, the bid company and the, this company's gonna, they're gonna take care of that. So it's, there's no money coming out of hand, out of pocket at the time.
Is this still going out to bid?
It's going to go to a company that, no, it's not going to go, it, it's going to go out to bid, but it's not, it's not like a standard bid process where we put out in the paper, this is what we're going to do, send it back in. This is going to go through a company that, essentially the best way to describe it, it's a, it's a nationwide, or ability to use it nationwide, state bid price. So you're, companies have already bid on what they're doing. It's through a central company. So you put in yourself, this is what we want to buy, and you're getting their best price back to start with.
Is the company in Maine building it? No?
Company in Maine is building it, yes. Yeah, that would be our, that would be our goal.
So who puts out the bid? The company in Maine?
We work with them and it goes through this, this independent company that has pre-manufactured bids, if you will, already done. It allows you to sort of, we've all done this, you know, you build larger projects and you design it specifically so only one person can bid on it. That's, let's face it, that's how a lot of, you know, if you want to buy a certain brand, if you want to buy, this, this third party allows you to do that.
So do they, I just curious for myself. So they build it, but do they get like the box and all the components are shipped into them and they assemble it?
The company up in Sugarloaf, Maine would get the chassis from Ford, put the box on it?
Right.
With all the stuff and drive it down here.
Okay. So they don't actually build the box then? Maybe. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not positive if they, I don't, I, well, they probably do, but I don't want to answer that as, yes, they 100% do. I know that, you know, the chassis and everything is shipped to them, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Chief, how old is the used ambulance we just purchased?
2000 and it was, it's a 2008. And I say that because it was the, it was an end of year. It was built in one year. It was, the truck, the chassis was built in one and the, and the box and put in service in another year. So it's 2007 is actually when it was all put together and running as an ambulance.
Thank you.
And we should have that in service within the next probably week, if everything goes right.
Any other questions for the chief while we have him here?
Well, I have a question and excuse me for being just, I don't know, I don't get it. But I, we're paying $315,000 or something like that for a new ambulance. We just replaced another one for what, $25,000?
Yep.
So why am I, why are we looking at an extra $275,000 to $280,000 for the new ambulance? And what do we get for?
Well, we get a parade new ambulance that's going to last 15 years.
Why not buy two used ones, you mean?
Yeah. We need to, well, this ambulance is going to last for 15 years. We're not going to be going out and buying the quality of ambulance we just bought on the used ambulance for $25,000. We got lucky on this one. I'm just going to be honest, we got lucky on this one.
What do you expect, what do you expect for the life expectancy of the one we just bought?
It would be, well, it's going to, it will be replaced within the next, if we stayed on our track, less than 10 years at best. When we're ready to replace another one at five years, we're going to have to make the decision if this is the ambulance to go or if one of the older ones is the ambulance to go. And we'll make that decision as we get closer, just like we did with this one.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand the difference between $25,000 and $308,000 or $315,000. So I think you've given me an explanation.
Scott, can I ask a question, Scott? So we're going to use the money from, the profits from the ambulance service we have now, correct? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah. So within, within the budget, budget year, we're already closed. We moved $75,000 in for an ambulance replacement. The budget year we're working in right now, another $75,000 is going toward that. And we did put down here that we would be bringing the financing terms to be approved by the finance committee. So we, we know that the 4.85% or 85% is not the way to go. So we'll look at it in the spring. It could be in conjunction with developing the next budget, that we go out and we do a short-term bond. We could, you know, put $150,000 down and only be looking to borrow 150 and pay it off in three years. So we'll look at interest rates, six, eight months from now. We'll bring it to the finance committee and say, these are our recommendations, and let the finance committee be in on the final decision of how we go.
I guess my question is, where, we've only tested the waters for one year here with the, with the budget. So if next year it explodes, where are we going to get the money to pay for the ambulance?
Well, not expecting it to explode, but really, in reality, this ambulance should have been purchased or ordered a year ago at this time. And the reason I held back on it is because I wanted to get a first year of numbers under our belt to know that we could put away 75,000. So in reality, if you did 75,000 a year for five years, which is when we're going to be rotating the frontline ambulance out. So in a perfect world, we would be buying a new ambulance every five years. The primary goes to second, and then after another five years, the second goes to third. 75,000 times five years is $375,000. We're talking about $309,000 here. So again, as I think I've always been with you, we try to be conservative with our numbers.
But like I said, I mean, we just proven one year's budget. It doesn't mean that's going to happen next year.
It doesn't. There's lots of gambles in life.
I understand that.
I don't feel, I don't feel this is a gamble.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you. The, if I could just make one other comment on that. In your staff report, I tried to, tried to spell it out pretty nicely, the difference in pricing and what that is. The 309 I had originally asked last time, at 315 was my original one. I didn't actually ask for a number in this one. You'll see the 309. We got the 2020 quotes back. It added like $2,800 to it. So the 315, if I was looking for a vote, would still stand and get us at, right at the number with very little wiggle room. But that's, that would be more than enough.
So how can we, I'm looking at the draft motion here. How can we approve a motion that doesn't have a dollar amount on it?
You could put a not to exceed 315,000. I mean, again, we haven't truly gone out, inspected and got the final number from them yet, but we were very solid with where that number's going to be. So if you want to say not to exceed 315,000, we'd be comfortable with that.
All right, thank you. We ready to get to a motion on this? We can have further discussion at that point in time. We'll wait a second for Council Hosmer.
Well, I'm going to.
You got a song and dance routine for us, Council Bowns?
No, I'm going to break the ice here.
Occupy the intermission.
I'm going to move to approve the purchase of a new ambulance with financing terms to be approved by the finance committee at a later date at a price not to exceed $315,000. I'll just get it out there for discussion.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Council Haynes, seconds a motion. All right, we are at discussion. Motion is to approve the purchase of a new ambulance at a price not to exceed $315,000 with financing terms to be approved by the finance committee at a later date. Council Hosmer, we have a motion on the floor to, by Council Bowns, to approve the purchase of a new ambulance with financing terms to be approved by the finance committee at a later date and a price not to exceed $315,000, an authorization not to exceed 309. Any discussion? All those in favor of that purchase, please raise a hand. Any opposed, please raise a hand. We have three votes, I'm sorry, four votes yes, one vote no. The motion carries. Okay, next item is discussion of regarding the green space at Sanborn Park in Laconia or in Lakeport, I believe in front of you, starting on page 28. You have a staff report and a cover letter from Stephen J. Smith and Associates. And I see Mr. Smith with us here tonight. Are you prepared to address this?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. We'll recognize Steve Smith to make presentation on behalf, so for our audience's sake, the city received a letter on October 15, 2019, from Mr. Smith, representing in a professional capacity. Oh, how do you pronounce that?
Antaeus?
Atna Evis Holding Company LTD.
You did a better job than I did.
How to pronounce that. Anyway, this is Mr. Everett. An LTD owned by him and whatnot and has to do with, with the building known as the Lakeport Opera House.
Mayor Council member Stephen Smith of Steve Smith and Associates. I am here representing Scott Everett tonight. I must admit, I haven't been a part of the discussions that they've had at the past with the council relative to this project. I am currently working on a site plan for the Opera House in the lot right behind the Opera House, 781 Union Avenue and 27 Clinton Street, which we are proposing to merge. The Opera House is under renovations for the first floor under administrative review for office space, a coffee shop and a salon on the first floor. We are putting a site plan together for renovations to the second floor and third floor. Second floor hopefully being the Opera House itself and then two residential units on the third floor. Plans have been submitted to the city on that. I will say that we have been looking at other parking locations and other possibilities. We continue to do that. This is not the only thing I have on my plate in terms of parking for the Lakeport area and the projects that I'm working on relative to Scott Everett. But this is one of them. And he requested that we make a formal request to the council for that. I had submitted just a very generic parking plan for the, what would be the two lots off from Clinton Street, the vacant field areas that are fenced in now, based on a request from my client to submit with this letter. I have had some discussions with, with the city manager. And after I had submitted this letter and this plan, I found out that there has been federal funding, as I understand it, invested in the park. And that based on that federal funding, you couldn't just put a parking area there anyways, unless it was a parking area supporting the park itself and solely for the park use, if I read that email correctly. And that the only way that there was a possibility of doing anything at that park would be for, to come up with another piece of land that is not currently dedicated for recreational use, purchasing that and exchanging that, if I'm correct from reading the email, exchanging that for utilizing a piece of property at the park. That's how I understand the situation to be today. And that's not a given. That would have to be reviewed by the, whatever authority that presented the funding. So there are some, there are, there already are some hitches in whether or not we could even do it, even if the council said we could do it. But we still want to consider it. We want input from the council on it as part of our due diligence of looking at, you know, trying to get more parking in Lakeport. So just so everybody knows, this is not just the only thing we're looking at. But it is an important piece of the puzzle to get parking to revitalize the Lakeport area, which, and we talk about it in downtown Laconia, we talk about it everywhere in the city. So we all recognize the need for parking. I have looked at Elm Street. I've looked at, actively looked at increasing parking on Elm Street between Railroad Ave and Park Street. I put together a concept plan on that. I've shared that with the Public Works Department, reviewed it in the field to take, I think, the six parallel parking spaces and convert that to somewhere as around 15 perpendicular or angled parking on the north side of Elm Street between Railroad Ave and Park Street as additional parking. We're tearing a building down behind the Opera House to put in 14, well, probably be 13 by the time it's done, parking spaces in that area. We've talked to several property owners along Union Avenue to look at using existing parking spaces that are there at certain times during the day or night that they aren't being used. It could be used for the Opera House. We've, we've looked at that avenue. We've talked with people on that. So we're, we're working on a lot of different things. This isn't just, this is not just the only thing we're focused on, but it's, it's part of the whole puzzle. And it's my understanding that in order for us to move forward with, with any consideration, we had to have a formal request. And that's the purpose of my letter to you, giving you the plan that we have.
Okay. And let me clarify for the public who doesn't have access necessarily to your letter dated October 15, that the, Mr. Everett has stated in this letter through Mr. Smith that he is quote, "willing to participate in the design and construct cost of the new parking area to be used as public parking, provided that his company can reserve said parking during events to be held at the Opera House." Additionally, he is indicating that, that any and all activity that he undertakes in the development area on Elm Street as well as at Lakeport Square will contribute to the coffers of the Lakeport Tiff District. And he is suggesting that those monies flowing into the Tiff District could also be used to offset the development of, of parking.
Possibly.
Possibly.
We're just, we're making light of the fact that that money's there.
How many spaces did you outline?
On the plan I gave you?
Yep.
Somewhere as around 90 parking spaces, I think.
90?
Yeah, I think that's what it came out to be.
Okay, it's a little under an acre, right?
Yeah, I believe so. It's been a while since I counted them there, so I don't want to be held to that, but.
All right. So while we have Mr. Smith here, any questions for Mr. Smith?
I did think it was a good idea of parking down below on a ball field at top, but.
Council Bowns?
I just have a comment. This applicant was before the planning board when last we met with a performance zoning concept for the Opera House and for, for Lakeport. We tabled that at our last meeting. We'll take it up again in our December meeting. But I, I think it's worthwhile to keep the discussion going forward, to explore what options we have with respect to this. That doesn't mean I'm in favor of paving over Sanborn Park. I like Jared Gilmet's concept of an elevated park. I just think that if we don't take the opportunity to further the discussion forward, we're never going to come up with a resolution. That doesn't mean Sanborn Park goes, it doesn't mean it stays. It means that we should be moving forward with the discussion, which I think would include looking for other property that we can use in a tit-for-tat exchange, if that's, if that's where we go. So that's my thought.
Council Hamel?
I, I think the solution is kind of staring us in the face. And I think that solution would be that Mr. Everett and whoever partners want to partner with him, talk with the people who own O's and build a parking garage in their lot. You could build it right there by where the Wild Trail ends at, at Lakeport. You got stairways that come stairways that come up.
I believe we-
It's a ideal place.
We've had that discussion.
Well, that's good, I'm glad to hear that.
And it's still ongoing, as I said, this is not the only avenue we're looking at.
Okay, because to me, that would interfere with nothing, if you put that there. And as far as Dave's continuance of, you know, whether we do this or whether we don't, my opinion is, we don't. Couple meetings ago, I stated that, that, that grass area should remain there, there's none left around it, and for the city to go buy other pieces of property in the area at probably premium prices, why should we do that? Build another park somewhere, another lawn area somewhere else, where the person you're looking to do all this with, he has the same options. He can go look for buildings that aren't used, that are probably could be torn down very easily, and make parking spaces there, not far from where he wants to do his Opera House.
We are doing that, too.
Good, I'm glad to hear that, too.
We're, we're doing all of those things. I don't want you to think that this is, we're not just focusing on this.
Yeah, I understand, but, you know, with the complication you mentioned, and even without it, I wouldn't vote to make this a parking lot.
Well, I think it brings a complication in that, that makes it very difficult.
Yeah.
Based on my experience working with that issue.
Okay, I just want to let you know where I stand.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I know you've done a lot of good work around Laconia, so, and I appreciate what you do.
Counselor Haynes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand there's a parking problem, but I concur with Counselor Hamel. I mean, we had a petition from the neighbors, and many of the people spoke. What concerns me the most is that is such a condensed neighborhood, and the streets are so narrow, I just don't see a parking. That's not the solution. But I think, my compliment, because I know you're working on many, many solutions, and I think the council is very open to any solution we can find, but this counselor paving over Sanborn Park, it's not going to happen.
Anyone else like to ask a question or weigh in? The one thing that I would like to add is that, and I believe Counselor Hamel, you're our representative to the Parks and Rec Commission, correct, from a liaison standpoint? I think one thing we're missing here, and somebody mentioned earlier, one of the guests who spoke earlier mentioned, you know, what plans do we have, what's the master plan, whatever, and I think one thing that's missing here is, is any guidance or, or thoughts from the Parks and Rec Commission on what their plans are for, if any, for Sanborn Park. I mean, I think, you know, the, the, the honest assessment of the current situation is, is that we have a very nice, most part of an acre green field that we basically cut the grass on, and that's it, surrounded by a very inhospitable eight-foot-high chain-link fence and a locked gate with a big old padlock on it. And it's hardly inviting for, for any activity, whatever, and as far as I know, no one has come forward to say, well, that, you know, in our long-term plan, or even our short-term plan, let alone long-term plan, this is what the city intends to do with that property. This is our dream of, of what we're going to do with it. And we've heard nothing on that, and so I would strongly encourage the Parks and Rec Department and Parks and Rec Commission to get involved in this and weigh in in terms of what is their plan for, for the future, for, not Sanborn Park, we're not talking about Sanborn Park in its entirety here, we're talking about that field, the grass field that is currently has nothing on it at all, other than a nice field of lone grass. I understand at one point in time, it was a ball field years ago, but that, there's a slight hint that there used to be a home plate over by one of the corners and whatnot, but that's the only remnant anymore of any sign that there was ever any activity of any kind, a ball field or anything else on that piece of ground, ground. So, you know, I think, I think we need to do more than just let it sit there and, and have a plan in mind for, for what the city wants to do with that land. And if it is a consensus, and it seems like we're headed in that direction, that we don't want the green space interfered with, then let's make use of it, let's turn it into something that's, at least theoretically.
One of the meetings I attended at Parks and Rec, it was brought up, because the gentleman was there that night, and it, it was admitted that the park is not used, that green space is not used very much, it was used by a local school for a period of time for their soccer practice and that kind of stuff, but agreeable that that's kind of gone to the wayside, from what I understand. But, you know, that school could reuse it again. What they're looking for, to do for the future of that, I, I don't know, to be honest with you, but I'd just hate to see that given up where scheduling of athletic, athletic activities in our parks is extremely difficult with all the teams that we have around, where there's not enough facilities to accommodate everybody, basically, they're using pretty much every inch of place there is, and-
Then why isn't that field used?
Well, that's what I was just bringing up, is that, that should be used too, to, to accommodate something. There's no reason why you can't play soccer over there, or, or something along that line. But it's worthy of a discussion, that's for sure.
Of course, then you have the issue of parking. There's no place to park.
You drop them off, and then they, then a coach is babysitting, and you pick them up.
I, I was that coach for a number of years, using that field.
Yep.
And that's, that was the only field that we had access to for, for soccer practices. And it's a, it's a little small for a full-size soccer field, but it, it, it was well-maintained, and it's perfectly flat, and there's a lot of, you could use it, you know, you could use it, but it's not particularly inviting space, that's for sure, with the chain-link fence and the, and the lock there, but we were, we did use it because it was the only place we had access to.
Oh, while we, I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
I just want to be clear that I am not an advocate for paving Sanborn Park. No, hold on. You may say that. I only want to continue the discussion.
You'll be there with a shovel in the morning.
So, when you say it's not happening, I may agree with you in the end, but it would behoove us all to continue the discussion and explore the possibilities. It would be the smart thing to do, as far as I'm concerned.
I don't mind exploring the possibilities.
All right, just a second here, are we, are we finished with Mr. Smith first? Other questions or comments for him?
I think he wants us to be finished.
All right, thank you for coming, we'll bring this back to the council level.
Thank you.
All right, so now the question is, what's the wish of the council in terms of any, if, if, what if any future action to take with regard to this request?
I move that we continue to explore all possibilities, including a land swap, or complying with the terms of which we got Sanborn Park, exploring all possibilities. I love the idea of an elevated park and a garage underneath. I, I like the idea of bargaining with O's and doing a, and doing a parking garage there. I'm looking for a solution, so, I'm moving that we explore our possibilities, that's my motion, and I'm sticking to it.
Who, if I had a question, Mr. Mayor, who, who leads this discussion, though?
I was just going to ask, who's going to do this?
They're asking you, Counselor.
Dave's made a motion, so you got to ask for a second.
Well, I will, but I, I want to give him the opportunity to explain if, in case he wants to amend the motion.
Friend who?
Who's, who's a friendly amendment, if, who's going to, to do the exploration, who's going to be responsible for that? Pregnant boss.
I'll do that, I don't care, I, I want some help, but, you know, we need to, we, we ought to-
You want to refer it to committee?
Yeah, yeah, good idea.
How about land and buildings?
No?
Land.
I'm not on that committee, that's what-
Manager like to weigh in on what-
Doing any legal. Not doing it.
Well, you're, you're on the committee, so if you're opposed to it.
It is city land, I mean-
I'm voting no, so-
Oh, that's all right, there's four of us that can vote, yes.
Land and Buildings is the only one that it would remotely fall under.
Yes, sir, I-
So would you like to amend your motion to say land and buildings committee?
Consider it amended.
All right, so we have a motion, is there a second, Counselor? Seconded by Counselor Hosmer. All right, further discussion?
We don't have much choice.
And, and-
Just for, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
David, just for clarification, I'm not against any, I'm for all, looking at all options. I, I just wanted to make it clear that, right off the start, paving over the green space? No.
I, I heard you, I heard you.
But I think, you know, there were many options.
I want you to know that I'm not favoring-
Okay.
-paving over Sanborn Park. I want everybody to be clear about it.
I understand, but I, I think, I think the council is open-minded enough to look at all the options.
Call the question. Wait a minute, I'm not going to call a question until we've had a chance to discuss this. Counselor Hamel.
I'd like to make a amendment to his amendment.
An amendment? All right, amendment would be in order.
Amendment is that we have a vote of whether we even want to go down this path on this particular park.
Well, that's not an amendment, that's not an amendment. First, we have to vote on this, so if you're opposed to that, you vote no on this, and then another motion would be in order. That's not an amendment. It's dictating an entirely different course of action. All right, any further discussion on the motion as proposed by Counselor Bounce? Okay, and that is to refer this for further study to the Land and Buildings Committee, We ready to vote? Although, all who's in favor of Counselor Bounce's motion, please raise a hand. Three votes yes, all those opposed, please raise a hand. Two votes no. We have three votes yes, two votes no, the, the motion passes, and this, this matter has been referred officially to the Land and Buildings Committee, and we would ask that the clerk add this to the Land and Buildings Committee as an, as a item number, what, five?
Yes.
Okay. And we will leave it up to Counselor Hamel if and when he wants to schedule a meeting on this. Now, if you want to make, so that motion's done, if you want to make another motion at this point in time, it would be in order.
I'll make this motion. I'll, I'll state, I'll say this statement, I don't mind looking into things for the area. My objection is to turn this into a parking lot. So I'll make a motion that Sanborn Field does not get paved.
All right, Counselor Hamel makes a motion that the council go on record as stating that as any potential part of a Lakeport Square area parking solution, the council will not consider paving over a portion of Sanborn Park.
Correct.
Is that accurate? Okay, you got that, Madam Clerk?
I do.
Is there a second for that motion? Counselor Haynes seconds that motion. All right, discussion. Do all understand what's being proposed here?
I do. My, my concern is that, shouldn't this just be pushed to land and buildings for them to make this decision? You can, as the chair of, of that, you can rule it out when it's brought into the realm of your discussion and, and move accordingly. I, I'm not an advocate for paving over Sanborn Park. What I am an advocate of is finding a solution that can fuel the development and further investment in Lakeport. So, I, I don't, this is not my instinct here, so I would just push it to that.
I think, Counselor, in fairness, we can do both. I'm not advising you do both, I'm just saying that, that it's now the, the issue before us in terms of the city participating in some sort of help, whatever you want to call it, for Sanborn area parking, has been referred officially to the Land and Buildings Committee, okay? So what is happening now is Counselor Hamel is wanting the council to go on record as saying that as part of that broader solution, the Land and Buildings Committee will not consider paving over a portion of Sanborn Park.
Sure, which in my mind means that it's never discussed. This proposal, good, bad, or, or anywhere in between, it's never discussed by that committee. I think now that it's been voted to send to that committee, it should go to that committee, and if you don't want, if the committee decides they don't want it, and it's not an option for them, then it's taken off the table and not discussed, but to bring it back for another vote now, it's sort of-
No, it, it, what you're, no, I, I don't agree with what you say. The, the intent is taking that particular thing off the table, everything else can be discussed. Why do we want to, I mean, two thirds, two thirds of the Land and Building Committee are here now. It doesn't have to be, it's going to come back to the council anyway. So, what I'm saying is, we can discuss whatever's options there are out there, what I'm saying is, why bog down anything on the green area of, of that?
Now, in effect, we've referred this to the Land and Buildings Committee, and two thirds of the Land and Buildings Committee are on the record here tonight as saying they will not sign on to paving over a part of Sanborn Park.
And that's fine, and they can make their motion, make their recommendations to the council out of committee, and then the council will have the opportunity to review everything and take a vote.
Correct. You've had an opportunity to review it right now, why let it fester?
Because it's too early, you don't have enough information. What you're doing is reacting-
I call the vote.
I move to table.
All right, that's non-negotiable, so we have a motion on the floor from Counselor, from Counselor Hosmer to table the, the motion proposed by Counselor Hamel. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
The motion is seconded by Counselor Bounce, so now, without further discussion, we're going to vote on the table, all right? So if you vote yes, you're tabling this to future date uncertain, and that'll be the end of the discussion tonight. If you vote no, it will not be tabled, and it will be back to the main motion, which is Counselor Hosmer's motion. Everybody understand that?
Counselor Hamel's motion, original motion.
Counselor Hamel's motion, I'm sorry, we'll be back to that motion. So yes, tables this, ends the discussion for tonight, a no vote, goes back to discussion of Counselor Hosmer's motion, or Counselor Hamel's motion, I'm sorry, too many H's here. All right, all who's in favor of tabling, please raise a hand. Two votes yes, all those opposed, please raise a hand. Three votes no. Two votes yes, three votes no, the motion to table fails. So we're back to Counselor Hamel's motion. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, so we're going to vote on the main motion now, Counselor Hamel's motion to have the, the, the city council go on record tonight as saying that as any part of a possible city participation in a parking solution for the Lakeport Square area will not include paving over a portion of Sanborn Park, correct? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. We have three votes yes, two votes no, the motion carries. Okay, so that's it for Sanborn Park tonight. Council comments. Counselor Cheney, you weren't with us last meeting, so I'm sure you've saved something up.
As a matter of fact. First, I'd like to apologize to the other counselors for my lack of being here two weeks ago. I had an emergency come up very late in the day, and I couldn't even spare time to make a phone call, but I apologize to all of you for not showing up and not explaining myself at the time. I'd like to mention actually three or four things. One of them is, or the first one is, Armin Baldock is, was an old friend of mine, some other members of the council, and Armin had, as I recall it, one wish, and that was that in the Lakeport Fire Station reconstruction, that the, the brick tower for drying hoses be kept. I think we allowed them to actually tear down the actual tower, but it was to be replaced with another one on the property, and that appears to be a bluish tower on, on the top of that building that has now been over a year without brickwork added to it, and I would like to ask that the staff find out and report back to the council when the owner of that property plans to finish that, as I understand it guaranteed to the city, that there would be brickwork returned.
Can you add that to your, any observation- Can you add that to your, any observation there in terms of what, what leverage we have at all at this point in time?
So it's my understanding that the host tower is going to be completed with an exterior finish to it. In looking back at what the approval was on the planning board, it was that to create a host tower, it was not ever specified that it need to be brick. So I believe the intent of the property owner is to go with another institutional type of facade to go on there that works with the building, is low in maintenance, and certainly something's going on there. But as my understanding is, it's not brick, nor was a brick host tower a condition of approval. It was a host tower.
On the part of the planning board?
Yes.
Okay. It's another matter perhaps on what was represented to the council at the time.
Understood. We have made it through our planning director, who is not here tonight, but made it very clear on an email that I was copied on that there was an expectation that the host tower was going to be brick, and this was a response from the property owner.
All right, next item.
Thank you. I, I want to compliment the manager and, and the staff, but particularly the manager. One of my constituents, who's lived on Windermere Heights for 47 years, had a portion of her walkway carried away by water in June when, according to her, and I, I guess confirmed, the catch basin at the top of her driveway failed, not failed, was plugged with leaves and whatever. Lot of water went down on her property, took out her walkway, et cetera. It, it's real easy, I'm sure, for the city to walk away from something like that. The manager went up personally and looked at it, and as a result, saw to it that the damage was repaired. And this, I'm sure she'll be horrified to hear me say elderly woman living alone has had her property restored to the condition it's been in for 47 years. And I want to thank the, the manager. I, it would have been easy to just sort of ignore it, and he didn't. And I think he's to be complimented for that. I, I've seen some work over on Beacon West around the bumpouts over there, proposed bumpouts, and I'm hoping those are not going forward. And I hope we could get some explanation of what is going on and, and... And I, I haven't seen any need for a physical bumpout over there. I don't know about others on the council, but the, the painting of bumpouts has seemed to accomplish what the city was hoping to do. I would remind everybody, I know nobody thinks of this, but this is the Hampshire way of a lot of snow and tend to plow it. And bumpouts are not going to contribute to a good plowing job, in my mind. So I, I have that question about the bumpouts, whether it's answered tonight or in the near future.
Can you answer that tonight?
I can. We, we did show plans there, both on Beacon West, and also doing a half a bumpout in two locations on Beacon East when we talked about doing the reverse angle parking. That is still a long distance for someone to cross without any kind of a, of a safety net. I mean, at least the bumpouts elevate them a little bit, bring them a little closer, narrows that road down a little bit, very cognizant of the need to plow and, and get in and around there. So that was presented from the very beginning. And actually, I can even recall in our original concept, we had a full bumpout shown down by the soda shop walkway, and it was very clear that that one on the soda shop side shouldn't have been there. So the plan was to do that. We did move the crosswalk down a little bit so that as the drivers are coming around the curve there, there's a little bit more distance at a minimum before leaving it there. We are going to have to do some cuts and do tip downs. But it was always the plan to do, paint them first to make sure that it worked and it, and it did what we intended. And to construct that one as a full two-sided bumpout and to come in and do the two partial, not the two parcels, but two half bumpouts here on Beacon East.
And where does that project stand?
We're looking at the weather, and I'm not sure that it's going to occur this year just based on where we are with the temperatures. It's about a two-week project and it, I know they were there doing some survey work and some markings and stuff, and I don't believe it's going to be done unless the forecast is favorable over the next couple of weeks.
What, what we will do is we will make a curb cut and ramp it so that the, the people who are using the crosswalk can safely get across. But we won't, unless the weather really breaks, we won't put the, the true bumpouts in. They'll still be painted.
I've lived here a long time and I've never seen anybody hit down there. I think they make it across routinely, but I'll leave it at that. My last item is important to me and a number of people who live in the North End, probably a number of people around the city. Back several months ago, Eversource started putting up poles the length of, of Parade Road to improve power distribution in that area. And that's commendable. But in the course of that, they started putting poles in the state park. As you're going up Parade Road, there's a small green area on the right and a larger field on the left, both of which are paid every summer by the state or by the state's proxy. And there were the poles going up in this smaller field on the right-hand side as you're northbound. A number of the neighbors in the area and I and, and others contacted Eversource and expressed our concern. We spoke to the state. The state said that DOT had given permission for the poles to go up, but not parks and, or, part, land and parks or parks and land or whatever the heck it is. So those folks got involved. Long story short, Eversource showed up and met with all of us. It's, it's real easy to complain about large corporations and the, and the ease with which they maneuver around things like this problem. Eversource showed up, listened to us, and got back to us within a couple of weeks and said, "We're not going to put those poles there. We're, we're going to take the ones we've put up down and we'll use the old path." I, I probably have had issues with going back to public service and certainly the phone company and others over the years. It's real easy to complain about them, but when they do something decent like this, I think I ought to step up and say thank you to Eversource for listening. They had permission. They didn't have to take the poles down. But they recognized that, that the folks who lived in the area and frankly, I got phone calls from people from Merritt who travel that road every day. And a number of people called about it. I, I just, I want to compliment Eversource for, for reacting positively to, to people's concerns. And, and it was nothing more than the beauty of the area we were trying to save. It probably would have saved them some money to go the way they wanted to go, but they backed off. And, and I think they're to be complimented for that. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Hamel.
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Scott or whoever paved the trench over there on Union Ave. It's nice and smooth now.
I didn't pave it, but...
I know you did. But you looked into it, so that's good.
He's so modest.
The, the other thing, the street light is still out. I hope that's looked at before we pave the sidewalks, and they might have to dig it up to find what's wrong under there. So it's two years waiting for that one. The, the other thing, and I'll go along with Counselor Cheney on it, is the bumpouts on Beacon West. I agree with them. I don't, they're not a, a great thing to have to plow around. And just because it was intended back when it was discussed, doesn't mean it has to go through. I, I think the solar flashing yellow lights will, will provide better awareness of somebody crossing that area than a bumpout, in my opinion. But anyway, it's, you know, whatever you decide. But I think we ought to relook at that. And also, I hope shortly that we get some kind of a outlook of the construction projects for next year so that the council can have an idea of what's going on. That would be appreciative.
So on those two items, as I shared with you, I think, last week, we did meet and we've got a framework, and I shared that framework. So we'll formalize that and get it to the council. If the, if it's the council's decision not to do the bumpouts, I'd, I'd rather have the discussion and give us guidance on it because we always presented it. I believe the mayor had said a number of times, having his, his business down on Water Street and crossing that, that's three lanes of traffic that you're, you're trying to go with some cars coming fairly quickly around that curve.
And that, that was prior to, I'll offer my personal experience, Counselor, from many years of trying to cross that as a pedestrian. It was scary at the least. But that was prior to us narrowing the traffic down to one lane. Whether that's changed or not now, I don't know. But certainly, we all know that, that it was a speedway coming around that corner there relative to urban conditions.
But, but consider the exercise you've got.
You're standing on side of the road, you know, and I had, I remember having a conversation with Chief Moyer at the time about it. And, and it was, and, and, and him pointing out to me that the state law was that pedestrians are only protected if they're actually in the crosswalk. They're not protected if they're standing on the curb hoping somebody will slow down. And so you're taking legally even your life into your hands to step off the curb. And, and, and that, what, what in my opinion was a speedway coming around that corner there was, was a very pedestrian, unfriendly place. And with the development of Beacon Street West, with the condominiums and apartments and whatnot, and, and a lot of increased foot traffic, hopefully going back and forth to Main Street from there, I just thought that we needed to... Now, whether the bumpouts are the answer or not, I don't know. I'm not an expert on that, on snow plowing or anything else. What I would say, though, is we now have two counselors on record as saying that they're opposed to it. And so I would suggest that one or both of you add this item to a, to a, an agenda before the end of the year. And so that the council, if you want the council to go on record theoretically as opposing this or whatnot and send that message to the administration, then we need to do that post haste.
Fair enough.
Instead of just bringing it up every two weeks and...
Yep.
Okay, can I make a motion then? I'll make a motion.
We need to post it on the agenda.
Yeah.
A motion for our next meeting, you mean?
Never mind.
You can add it to the agenda at the next, for the next meeting.
Well, I was going to say, look, we can just put it on Public Works Committee.
On the agenda for Public Works? Well, that's just going to delay a decision. I mean, we can...
Oh, you want to put it, oh, I see what you're saying.
Put it on a council agenda for action, a resolution or whatnot that you would propose or the both of you would propose, saying that you want the council to advise the administration that we do not want bumpouts at that location.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I understand what you're saying.
And we can take care of that at our next meeting or the first meeting in December, and then it'll be behind us one way or the other. And then we can have DPW come and tell us what the snow plowing challenges are or whatever issues are affected by it. Okay. You have other council comments? Council comments? Anyone else? No? Okay. I would advise, we're at the end of our agenda tonight. I will advise the council that we have a need for a non-public session immediately following, so we're going to need to clear the room for that. I do not anticipate the council taking any public action after that non-public meeting. So we thank you all for attending. And I would entertain a motion that the council enter a non-public session under RSA 91A3, paragraph 2, subsection D, for consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which if discussed in public would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community. Someone make that motion, please?
I'll make it.
Counselor Haynes, seconded by Counselor Hosmer. We need a record vote on this. So I'd ask the clerk to call the roll as to whether or not you wish to enter a non-public session for this purpose.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Bounce?
What suspense? Yes.
The temptation to say...
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Hosmer?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we are in non-public session. We'll wait for the clerk to shut her operation down and get us off the air.
Hey, these didn't stay lit again. They fixed that. Okay, all right.
Okay.
Did you get this from Lakey?
Yeah, I was just, I saved it. I haven't, I haven't read the whole thing. It's pretty dense, but...
Yeah.
You done now? Oh, God.
This is, I'll just give you a signature. This is the resolution regarding the 3193. Now that it's passed.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Could I get this to you?
Sure, 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 sure.
That get into Dean's hands?
Got it through?
It's a Lake Placid, I don't know if he already has it, Lake Placid Airbnb thing. It's got some good stuff in there.
Sure, you want to grab your sewer warrant on the way?